I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call. Mrs. Mayor, you would do roll call for us?
I'd be happy to. Lisa Collins.
Here.
Tim Maniker.
Here.
Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Tom Cruise.
Here.
Jep Young.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
Anita Shaykusinski.
Here.
And I'm here, Kate Muir.
Okay, so with seven of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I would so move.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Public participation. If there, is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? Can we ask that a five-minute time period per person be followed? Please come forward, state your name, address, and topic to be addressed. Anyone would like to approach the board, come to the table.
Where are you walking from?
At the table there. And I would just remind the public issues approaching the table that under public participation, we very rarely respond to comments made because they aren't items usually on the agenda. If they are regarding items on the agenda, we encourage people to stay to listen to the discussion that we have related to that. But if you would introduce yourself, your address.
Okay, my name's Connie Romanowski. I'm Kevin's mom. My address is N-8891 Asplislet Road of Holman. I received an email that Cheryl Hancock was supposed to contact me, and I never heard a single word from her yet. According to Mueller's letter to families, "In the school district of Holman, every student matters." If so, why wasn't there a moment of silence for Kevin? When the show choir asked for a moment of silence before their school presentation to students, administration said absolutely not. The only moment there was for Kevin was after my family and I asked for one. These examples make me and my family feel that not every student matters. As stated in Mueller's letter are some activities the school does to quote, "educate, build awareness, and create a safe environment for our students." My daughter, an early graduate, has never heard about kindness awareness month at the high school or diversity awareness. Only once does she remember seeing a poster in one of the bathrooms of "Spread the Word to End the Word." Another statement made and supposedly supported by the school district, "Be safe, be respectable, be responsible." I have received many messages and complaints about the school staff. The day after my son's death, a particular teacher's comment to one, if not more, of his classes was, "I don't know why this is such a big deal. It's not being respectful." Bullying is a huge issue in the school. We cannot, and I repeat, cannot continue with the way the school district operates its bullying policy. The anti-bullying policy is vague and needs to get updated from the May 2011 version. I have reviewed other school policies that is way, way more specific than ours is. And being in this district for five years, this is the first year I have seen something about our policies. Wisconsin statute 118.46, line two states. "Annually, the school board shall distribute the policy to all pupils enrolled in the school district and to their parents or guardians." But Holman's school board policy is, their anti-bullying policy says, "The annual report will be made available to the public upon request." We have to figure out a better system for our kids to report bullying. What's already here isn't working. Kids don't feel safe coming to the school staff or using whatever this Spurgio, Sprigio, whatever you call it. My daughter, along with many others, have always felt that the school is beating around the bush with this issue. In eighth grade, Kevin was taunted by a boy, and Kevin threw punches until his friends got him off a kid. Kevin rolled up into a ball and just cried. He didn't mean to fight, but he was frustrated of being bullied, and the school staff didn't do anything about it. Kevin was suspended for three days, but nothing happened to that kid that started it. We were threatened. If Kevin fights one more time, he'd get expelled, and we might face charges by the parents. Both my husband and I agree that Kevin deserved a punishment for fighting as it's being responsible. But what is the school showing the kids that bully? It's okay, so keep doing it, and the victim gets punished, which is not safe. My son took his own life because of bullying. And I and my family, along with many other students, parents, community members, want to see changes to make our school bully free. Now, do you, as a school board, want this? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
My name is Steve Kounas. I live at N-8793 Asplislet Road in Holman. And I have a few questions for you. Several of them, if not all of them, are rhetorical, and I don't expect an answer. My questions and concerns are about Kevin Romanowski. Kevin died on February 17, 2016. Kevin's family requested a moment of silence shortly after his death. Administration answered with a cold no. Then Kevin's mother was asked to speak at the high school students on March 3, where here it was the only way that she could get a moment of silence for Kevin. Connie asked the students to leave in silence. The students granted her wish. And I thought that every student mattered. That's exactly what it says up there on that heart. You matter. Chris Mueller's February 26 letter to all parents references Sprigo, an answer to an online reporting system. What parents have even heard of this option? I'll answer that. None that I've talked to. In the March 11 Lacrosse Tribune article, "A Teen Suicide", Chris Mueller states, and I quote, "But we will also want to improve and make a better environment." Ironically, the week that Kevin died, Joe Gao, UW chancellor, commented on the diversity issues and related racial issues at the college. He said, "The university had a problem, and we need to correct it." Now, that's a sign of a true leader. I've heard no one at this school district say Holman has a problem. Have you checked the Alaska School District anti-bullying policy? Under the definitions and examples of bullying, they are very specific and very easy to read. Real work went into the formulation of this policy. And as long as you're on the web, check out the June 17, 2010 article entitled "Holman Bullying Policy on Fast Track." This policy by state law had to be board-approved by August 15, 2010. The policy was taken from the DPI's model policy. Sounds to me like a lot of work went into it, well thought out. You say you want to improve, well, do it. Looks like it hasn't been revised since May 9, 2011. Chris Mueller also states in the March 11 article that "we are constantly doing preventive measures to create a safe and comfortable environment." If that's true, you will make sure that a hard copy of the anti-bullying policy is available in all student buildings. According to state law SB 154, the school board must provide a copy to any person who requests it and annually distribute to all pupils enrolled in the school district and their parents and their guardians. And we're going to be watching. Did Kevin know we had options? Ask yourselves. What do we need to do differently to have a different outcome? Where is the compassionate understanding for this family? Yes, bullying is happening everywhere, but this happened on your watch. Kevin was an awesome and caring child, and I will miss him. Thank you.
Steve, is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Thank you. Then we will move on to our agenda. Reports and discussion, Holman High School Robotics Club.
We got a quick video, and then we'll have the kids come up to present. Is there a way to bring the sound up? Oh, well, it doesn't need the music. Now you guys have to come up. Okay, we did bring our robot in, so. It's not as exciting to see the robot. You guys might come back in here. What'd you say? Alyssa's coming up next. Okay. So, Mitchell, have you started talking about what the team actually did with the robot?
All right. Well, basically, we started off at a kickoff hosted by one of the more experienced teams. There were lots of teams at that kickoff, and we all got one big tote of parts. That's what every team got. And all the rookie teams also got a separate big kit of parts. And from that, everyone made a different robot. And you were also allowed to buy other parts and make your own parts. But essentially, that's what we got. That's what we made this out of. We had six weeks total. And we kind of split that up. So we designed the different parts, and then we assembled them.
So two of the biggest themes for the first robotics competition is gracious professionalism and co-operation. So those are two things that they kind of coined. And pretty much the meaning of those is it's not your average competition. We're not against you. We don't try and manipulate the other teams or anything. We all work together with our competition. Because during the competition, we are randomly matched with other teams to be our allies. So we're never sure which teams we're going to be against, which teams are going to be with us. So that's really strong belief that robotics competition is always be helping out your neighbor. So you could see in the video, we had a lot of time that we discussed with other groups, shared ideas. I remember I was in the center table during our competition, and they announced that some group needed a bit of Velcro. And within minutes, there was like three teams coming over with tons of Velcro. It's a really great opportunity for us to learn communication skills and to work.
Like Alyssa said, we learned co-operation and gracious professionalism. But besides that, we learned the basics of science, technology, engineering, math. We had different people on different teams. We had our build team, they learned a lot about building. We had our programming team that almost learned an entire new language. We were like one person experiencing Java, and then the entire new language in about a week or two. And also, besides those, we have a marketing team where we have to go and get sponsors. So we learned how to communicate with people in the community. We learned how to build connections with people. So now we have a bunch of connections with people in the community so that when we apply for jobs and stuff like that out of high school. RBC Foundation and Sergeant Labs towards one of them, where right now they said that if anybody needs a summer job on the team, we can go there. So that gives us an edge over other people in the same field that are applying for the job. It also just teaches us how to be friendly with each other, how to be communicative with each other, and just how to have a good time.
All right. And for the actual competition, we went to, we went to Billith to compete, which was one of the two regionals there that we competed in. And during the competition, we first had to play qualification matches, where you were paired with two other teams of robots, competing against another team of three, and attempt to win. We ended up taking, we placed seventh place after all of our qualification matches, which meant we got to play in the quarterfinals, where we selected our own team to play with. And, yeah.
It was, so this was our first year, and they have done a tremendous amount because I'm their coach, and I know nothing about programming and nothing about construction. And they researched and communicated, and then we got some engineers working with the team too. So everything that they did, they did, and they worked together on it. And when he says we made seven, there were 61 teams there. And there was a very big gap between our team and the next rookie team down. They had a very reliable robot and worked well with other teams. So it's been such a great opportunity. And to hear other teachers telling me, "These students are talking about it. They're excited about computer programming. They're excited about engineering and math." It's fantastic. It definitely fills a need in our school, and it's really exciting. And also, we need to raise $10,000-ish to be world champions. So if you know any company owners or anyone in the community who'd be interested, I do have some sponsorship forms. We'll be heading out in a little bit, but I'll leave these behind to either mail back to us, or we do have a GoFundMe account too. So if you're interested in supporting our journey to learn with all the nations there, look for that.
What's the money for?
Ah, okay, so there's a $5,000 registration fee. And then, yeah. And then transportation, hotel stay.
Where?
To St. Louis, Missouri. We'll be there for four days. There'll be students from 60 different countries there. Rest of the time from... Other questions?
Other questions from the board?
I have some, way too many, so you can just pick the ones that you want to answer. And I'm just going to go through them. One of my thoughts was drones, because drones are really cool. But we're also looking at drones over school district. So we still use drones. Another is I've read in Wasby, these huge workshops where they bring in mentor engineers, sometimes retired. And kids come in, and they just build. I wondered if that's a thought. Female recruitment. Alyssa, I'm really glad to see you that we do have a female represented. And can you recruit more females? This, to me, seems like a club versus a class. So all of you folks gave time beyond classes. All right? And are there other engineers here tonight that helped? Can you wave at me?
We were fortunate enough to have Rick Hayden and Todd Smith, two train engineers, come and work with the students, which their insight in program management as well as how to pick a design has been very valuable.
All right. So do you want to pick one, just one of my questions and answer?
Okay. My choice to answer would be about female recruitment.
Go ahead.
It's definitely something that I'm really passionate about and hoping that we can work on more in the future. As soon as we formed a team, I also contacted UW computer science because they have a women in computer science department. And they said, "Oh, yeah, okay, we'll come." So they've sent some of their students, some of their female professors, to work on that. So hopefully, we do have four girls. I'm hoping to get that a little bit closer to even... The other things that we've done for recruitment, we have a ton of eighth graders that are interested in joining since the middle school started up there for Lego League, so.
Well, you said this is your first year.
Yeah.
Too, right? And so I'm not criticizing at all. They're just questions in my head.
But it's definitely something to work on.
It's very exciting.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, question. So you're trying to get your money. Are you working with any other areas of the school, in the business and that kind of thing? I mean, is business a part of the school? Are they trying to help market it for you?
Well, they have been pretty darn busy with their DECA, but I'm hoping that we can pull some of those students that have real strengths in communication and marketing to help us out so that we can learn from and with them.
We do have a marketing team that we kind of set up. So we have people working to communicate with other businesses. And we also have, we had some meetings on how to communicate to businesses, how to send emails and set up meetings. So we've been learning a lot of those skills ourselves, too.
Good for you.
Annie?
So how many students in total are included in the robotics club?
Yep, we have 22 students, four girls, 18 boys.
And does your robot have a name?
With Thor Robotics.
Milky?
Loki.
Loki, how do you spell that?
L-O-K-I.
If you know Thor, the Norse, it's his brother, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And Loki is moving.
There he goes, yeah.
Well, congratulations. You know, we have been hearing a little bit about this in the community and from Dr. Mueller. And we really appreciate you coming this evening and presenting. I know we often say that it's one of the best things for us to have that one-on-one input from students, directly from students. So it's much appreciated, and thank you. And congratulations on the work that you're doing. Very proud of you.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Want to make a comment if I can?
Sure.
I can talk really loud.
Okay.
This is not the only team in the region. And there is talk of a competitive interaction similar to what we have in the sporting event, which is one of the elements that's been missing from this aspect of learning for kids on this end of the spectrum is that community support. There is a ground swell of activity in about 10 teams in the region or so. Holman is actually the tenth. There are many across whatnot. They're talking about doing a regional perhaps here in the next couple of years. So the intent is to see this kind of activity, different kind of press that we would see in the support, in the community support that we'd see in other clubs or sports that we intend to promote.
I think there has been some recent press and media about it. So we do appreciate that and appreciate the work that you're doing and helping. It's very much a positive thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sponsorship forms here?
I would just note, as she's talking about the sponsorship forms, you know, it is the policy of the school district that we do support organizations as they go on to that statewide, state-level competition. But we don't, in all of our programs that are competing, National History Day winners, the DECA folks, they all have to do that on their own. So robotics is not alone in having to raise those dollars. So that's why they're probably not all doing one thing, Tom, because they're having to raise dollars for their own national competitions. So. Then moving on to Holman High School Counseling.
Hello. Hi, I'm Amanda Johnson. I'm interning at the counseling office at the high school four days a week, and I'm at Evergreen Elementary on Mondays with Melanie Aspenson. So I am here to help them talk about what's happening at the high school. Once the screen comes on, the first thing that I'm going to start talking about is ninth-grade checks, which happen weekly in the first semester of the school year. So once the screen comes on, you'll see what the counselors use for their ninth-grade checks. So they go into the language arts classrooms once a week, and they meet with all of their freshmen to check on their grades, check on their homework, and just talk to them and build relationships with them. They use that time from a language arts class, so they've collaborated with those teachers to figure out the best time to meet with those students. And through that time, they take about five to 10 minutes to help them transition to high school. Again, building that relationship is really important. They also use motivational interviewing to help them increase their grades and create academic success for those students. And strategic planning. So they have to-do lists for students to use if they have tons of missing assignments and things that they can help them with to create resources or help them find resources to be successful in school.
So I'm Heather Franzini. I'm a school counselor also with students aged through ME. This is my first year here at the high school. And the next thing that we're going to be talking about is our four-year plans that we start with freshmen, the beginning of their freshman year. And really, what we're trying to connect is the student's career goal and having them think about their educational goal. Do they want to go to a two-year college, a four-year college? Do they want to go into work? And then also that personal goal. Are they wanting to get better time management? Are they wanting to use less of their cellphone? Are they wanting to get to bed early? Different things that we're trying to have students think about these goals. And then also think about the four years that they're going to spend here at the high school and how those goals go into what classes they'll be taking. So if a student is thinking about being an engineer in their post-secondary goals, we're wanting them to take a CAD class or an AutoCAD class. If they're wanting to be a nurse, we're looking at some of the things Mr. Baker will talk about, but also our organic chemistry, anatomy, and physiology. So really trying to have students connect those goals with the classes that they're taking. And so we start that in their freshman year. And then we go into the classroom their sophomore year also and have them revisit that four-year plan because we know that goals are ever-changing, and students are changing their career. So we're having them cross it out and then add new classes. And again, during their junior meeting, which we'll be talking about shortly also, we have students look at that four-year plan again and kind of make those changes to those classes. So constantly a changing document that we're using. And so we're hoping next year, we can do it electronically so it's a little bit cleaner for students and a little bit easier for them to get at ongoing. So that's the four-year plan.
I'm Lori Kessler, one of the counselors as well. And what we're trying to scope out for you here tonight is our curriculum as we move through the grades. And it's, I think, important for you to note that not every counseling department goes into classrooms as much as we do. And we are very, very grateful to our language arts department for allowing us the time to do that. And this year, we extended out into math as well. So that was the freshman year. This is what we do our sophomore year. We work with the Language 10 curriculum. They do a goal-setting unit. And so we include how well-prepared am I for the future? Thinking that, "Okay, kids, you've been here for one whole year now. Now let's look at all the things." And they do a self-assessment about the things that each of the four areas of choice that they'll have after high school. And we generalize the four-year college, the two-year college, World of Work, and the military. And we look at different things, like ranging from class rank, GPA, their attendance, their attitude, their relationships, their co-curricular involvement. And we ask them to do a self-assessment about, "Where am I right now? I've had a year in high school. If this is what the colleges are looking for, if this is what the world of employment is looking for, what do I need to improve in my world?" And then they set a goal. And then they set a goal and they write a paragraph, and they also use that in their paper then, in their Language 10 curriculum. So, we really try to get a personal look at them. They get a look at their transcript. We review that four-year plan with them so that we are really meeting with every freshman and then every sophomore each and every year in a curriculum. And I, just looking at the board in general, I'm asking you to think to yourself, how many times did you see your counselor in the time that you were in high school? Because we see our kids a lot, and we get in there and we're very grateful. There's a, a new trend to have this really engaged relationship with the kids. So that's really a great thing, a great change, I think. So that's sophomore year, what we do with them.
Okay, so I'm Kelly Cornetta, again, one of the counselors. I work with the beginning part of the alphabet. Um, and so, one of my personal, um, favorites is, um, meeting with juniors. So, after their sophomore year, um, we call all of our, um, students in and meet with them and their parents. Um, and, and really the focus of this is, okay, now you have about a year and a half until you're out into the world. Um, and whatever that path is, if you're going to a four-year college, technical college, military, or that, or that world of work, um, how can I help you get there and how can your parents help you get there? And so it's really a great time to get everybody on the same page. Many times, this is the first conversation that the parents are having with their students about, um, what their future plans and goals are. So, we talk about that first, um, and then follow it up by their own unique strengths and abilities. And this is a great opportunity for parents to really share, um, some things that they maybe never shared with their own student. So, um, they, you know, do they see their student as having great interpersonal skills? Do they see them demonstrating hard work and perseverance? Many times, those are skills that kids have a hard time seeing in themselves. And so this is a great conversation that hopefully leads to some of those quote-unquote "soft" skills that kids will, um, maybe talk about in that job interview or write about in their college admissions statement. We're facilitating that conversation for these kids and these families. We talk about co-curricular and community interests. This is kind of our last-ditch effort to get these kids involved because we know that what is going on their resume is really important, whether college or employment. And so this is our opportunity to connect kids with not only what they like, but what they're involved in, and how does that all tie into future careers? So we talk about planning for their future, setting an ACT goal. We usually conduct these meetings around the same time that these students are going to be, um, taking that ACT for the first time. And so it's a great opportunity to talk about how are you preparing for this new statewide assessment that everybody's required to take? Um, and then we set a GPA goal, so how can they finish strong through their senior year? We share a variety of resources, um, in this meeting. We, every student walks out with a pretty sizable folder with whatever it is that they need. If they're looking at the four-year colleges, we have tons of booklets and resources. Um, they may have specific ideas as to what school they want to attend. Um, we give them the junior handbook, which I believe everybody should have received a copy. Um, and so we go through that with them, um, really focusing on that first page and that timeline. We want to make sure that none of our kids, um, miss a deadline and that everything is, is falling sequentially into what they need to do. So, spring of their junior year, some, um, summer going into senior year, fall of senior year, and then winter of their senior year. So it's a really nice sequence. And then throughout that booklet, we talk about, um, ACT resources. Um, if you want to go into the military, what are some resources for that? How to get a letter of recommendation? Um, you can kind of peruse through there yourselves, but it's a really all-encompassing source of information for those families. And we're really proud of that. I'll let Mr. Baikberg talk about then, senior year. We have a lot of programming that we talk with our seniors about in our curriculum.
Okay, I feel really low on this chair. Okay, uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Tim Baikberg. Um, my first year, uh, working with the school counseling, uh, department. I get to work with these fine ladies every day, um, halftime as the school counselor. Uh, but I also spend my other half of the day, and it really doesn't divide that way, but, um, contractually, my other half is coordinating. Um, and, and one of the things that I've learned is that, and we all know this, students are so different. Um, they're so different on the skills, on the strengths that they have, on, on their goals. Um, and, and one of the unique places we are in education right now is that we're able to provide all these different opportunities for students. Uh, we can foster those skills. We can foster those passions in ways at the high school that ten years ago, twenty years ago, we just didn't have the opportunities to do. Um, so I feel really privileged to be able to coordinate those opportunities for our students. Um, I wear a lot of hats. Um, I love that, um, and, and I'm passionate about it. And, and hopefully I'll keep this brief enough so, um, you'll stay entertained, um, and, and focused for me. Uh, so a lot of different, uh, programs or opportunities that students have available to them. Uh, I'll go through them briefly. Youth apprenticeship, uh, with the youth apprenticeship, in, in a nutshell, it's, it's really a great opportunity for students, um, and you can look up on that slide, all these different program areas, our career pathways. Opportunities for students to really dive into a career pathway they might have a little more interest in and they want to learn more about. Uh, it's a great way for us to connect with communities, with our business people. Uh, they take on one of our apprentices. That apprentice works four hundred and fifty hours with that business. Uh, they're, they're supplied a mentor. They kind of mentor them through, we partner that with a couple of classes here, taught at Holman High School, that really, it's a nice way to blend what's going on in the classroom with what's going on in the workplace, uh, develop those soft skills that Kelly was kind of talking about. Um, and it's a great way for students to see, is this really what I want to do once I graduate? And if it is, great, let's get you onto that next step. If it's not, um, let's try something else. Uh, this year we have six apprentices out in our area. Uh, I just met with students today, and I had close to forty applications go out for next year. So there, there's definitely a, an interest on the student's side, and as I talk to employers, uh, there, there's definitely interest on the employer's side to start working with their youth. So, uh, excellent opportunity there. Uh, that's more of the same. Um, youth options and course options. Last fall, I, I had the privilege to stop and talk to you about our youth options, course options programs. Uh, just a, just a quick review. That's where, uh, our high school students can take a college-level class at one of our universities or colleges in the area. The two programs are very similar. Um, there's, there's a few minor differences between the two, but essentially, college credit is earned from that student if they successfully complete the class. High school credit is awarded as well. Um, a great opportunity, um, for our students. Probably a growing trend for us this year is our, our nursing assistant students. I think close to thirty of our students, um, between this fall, this coming spring currently, and next summer, are working on their CNA through Western through course options, youth options. Um, along with all sorts of other classes, uh, it runs really the gamut. Everything from psychology to, um, CAD and, and automotive. So, uh, great opportunity there. Um, AP, um, AP exams will be administered the first two weeks of May. Uh, we've increased that this year. Uh, we're looking at three hundred and ten, uh, AP exams will go out. That's two hundred and, I think about two hundred and twenty different students at the high school are enrolled in at least one AP class. Of course, AP gives those students an opportunity to take a college-level class right here at the high school, uh, taught by a high school instructor, uh, kind of in the safety of, of that high school environment. At the end, they take an AP exam. If they score a three or higher, generally those colleges will look at that class and award them credit, um, for taking that class. So a great way for students to really try out and see, is college for me, what's a college class like? Um, and, and more and more, our colleges are requesting and looking for our students to have an AP class on that transcript. Um, and it's gonna get them through that door of that university if they do. Um, so that's our AP. Um, and then, of course, we have to talk about academies really, really quick. Um, we actually have three that our students can work with. The Health Science Academy is in, is a, a La Crosse school district collaboration with colleges and universities in the La Crosse area, along with the two big Gundersons and Mayo Systems. Um, we have four students this year, thank you, and our Health Science Academy. Um, all the academies run fairly similar. Uh, this one, they would take morning classes in the Health Science Academy at UWL. They spend their afternoons with us, uh, taking some core classes when they're there. It's very, uh, health-science-heavy, um, so medical terminology and anatomy, and getting them out into the different, uh, hospitals and settings to see what is it that this whole healthcare field is about. Um, we are also looking at piloting, and I'll be talking to you hopefully in the future, about our STEM Academy that we're working with, with Western Tech. Um, the STEM Academy is gonna look at mechanical design, electronics, uh, for the most part. Uh, if we pilot this, it would start next fall. We have twelve to fifteen juniors and seniors that have expressed interest in being a part of that, and very similar in the sense that they would spend mornings at Western, taking very hands-on STEM-type coursework. They would spend afternoons back here at the high school, taking care of their required courses. Um, there'd be mentors involved, uh, in, in getting out into the businesses and really getting a feel for what that whole industry is all about. Um, and then we also have an Auto Academy that West Salem, uh, sponsors, and we have, I think, four students there this year and about the same amount that will hopefully go there next year as well. Um, I don't know if I'm forgetting something. Nope, that's at STEM Academy. So, I think that's all my hats. Thank you.
He's got a lot of hats and we're glad to have him. Um, just as a wrap-up, that's kind of in a nutshell, our nine-twelve, um, career development curriculum. We also have two other strands, personal social development and academic, and so those are the areas that we work in. So, hopefully you got a little glimpse. We'll be back with, um, in a month or so, talking about the academic and career plan legislation that's coming down the way, that every student has to have an academic and career plan, um, by the year two thousand seventeen-eighteen. So, these folks will be doing a lot of work on that. So just wondering if you have any questions for us?
Are there any questions?
I do. Um, I don't know how you do all of what you do because you also have your doors open for kids who knock on the door and just say, I need to talk to you, Mrs. Kessler. The rest of you, this is phenomenal to me.
Hey, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Is there more funding that is needed? Uh, do we need more counselors? I mean, uh...
We're looking at... We're gonna say yes to that for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I'm just...
We're way over the state recommendation, yeah?
That's my bottom-line question is, and so I think, because this is so important, that is...
Well, a lot of things are very important, so yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that. Okay, thank you.
That would be true.
Any other questions?
Hey, thank you very much. It's always...
Thanks a lot.
...informed and informative to hear from you folks, and we do appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
I would note that Lori appears later on on our agenda on the personnel, um, report. And I know that you'll probably leave, Lori, so...
Oh, I might stay, just to make it official.
Oh, just to make it official. Lori, you know, is retiring, and so we just appreciate all that you do for many, many years, all that you have done, and just wanted to make a note of that before you did go out. So then next on the agenda is the district safety plan, and I think Wayne Sackett is going to present.
Our director of pupil services, Julie, so Wayne's going to fill in. He's part of our safety committee that he sits on with Julie.
So I don't have a PowerPoint presentation or anything at this time, so I'm kind of filling in short notice, but I'll fill you in on what the, the hard work that we've been doing, um, as a safety committee. We've been meeting since July of two thousand fifteen. And so, um, you know, as a district, you know, we, we feel that the safety of our students and staff are extremely important. And so, I guess first to start with, you know, the Wisconsin DPI is promoting the Safe and Healthy Schools Initiative, and, you know, encouraging our school districts all around the state. Holman, um, wants to make our schools the safest and healthiest that we can. So as an overview, um, for our district comprehensive plan, um, since we do take things so seriously, we've been meeting weekly, sorry, since July, um, as a committee. And those committees, led by Julie Craco, uh, John Daly's on the committee, Ben Gappa, Sue Hyland, Carrie Holter, uh, Joe Hickey, Shane Collins, which one of those two law enforcement officers can make it, Melissa Kates and, uh, myself. And so we've had these meetings to address, you know, our, our overall comprehensive plan. And we've tried to look at things through the lens of prevention and mitigation, preparedness and planning, response, and then recovery. So we tried to look at all aspects, you know, in, in our different buildings within the district through those kind of four major themes. And so to start with, from a, from a building crisis plan review, um, as part of the annual requirement, each building, we reviewed each building crisis plan and had the principal or associate principal present the plan, the safety plan for that building to the committee. So they covered things like who's on their crisis team, which is really important, the processes that are in place, the, the different drills they do when they do them, and procedures, uh, their building maps, um, how do they address a building crisis, maybe a, a fire or a gas leak or an accident within the building? We've looked at things from a district standpoint, what would we do if, well, there's a flood or a tornado or a major accident on the highway or a train accident nearby. Looked at the communication piece and then, you know, what would the recovery effort be? So each of the building principals presented on those things to the, to the committee. And as we went through the process as a committee, we identified some areas of, of growth, um, from a safety and, and of course, a security standpoint. So after we had collected all that information and, and we discussed it as a committee, um, we thought, you know, maybe it would be good to get an outside agency that does this to provide us with some more information. So we had the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association, uh, come to the school district and do a thorough security assessment, um, of all of our buildings, and then make recommendations for us to consider as we move forward and make decisions about safety and security within our district. Um, we recently got those reports back, and we're in the process of reviewing that report and, um, getting them to the, the building principals and as we move forward for our future planning. One of the things that came out in that, and, and we looked at it a little closer, was, uh, our lockdown procedures, um, in our, in each of our buildings, and what are the procedures for the drill, um, and what are the protocols for, for our lockdown? And so currently, in keeping our children safe in an event of emergency, our profi, our procedures say that, you know, the door is gonna be locked and we get our children away from the doorway. And so as we discuss that, you know, we're doing some research on best practices, and, um, the safety committee decided to kind of look into the possibility of using ALICE as an additional response to our lockdown. Um, if you're not familiar with that, ALICE is an acronym. Um, the A stands for alert, the L stands for lockdown, the I stands for inform, the C stands for counter, and E stands for evacuate. So, we, as we were looking into that, um, we decided to send three staff members, uh, from the Holman School District to be certified as ALICE trainers. And also, uh, one of our law enforcement officers went along as well. So currently, we have four people in, in the Holman, uh, community that are trained ALICE trainers to train others. And, um, we may begin to, uh, start training staff and, and have communications as early as April here. The last, the last piece, uh, that we thought was really important to address was, you know, the mental health support for, for, uh, our, our schools and the Holman School District. So, we wanted to be really mindful as we met weekly, um, to help build systems. We have a lot of great things taking place already, um, to help our, our students that struggle with mental health issues. But we want to have some, some new strategies and, and have things that are taking place to support our students and our families with mental health concerns. So, um, that's kind of the last area that we're looking at as an overview. It's kind of a sampling of everything. I, I mean, I'm trying to sum up weekly meetings since July in a short period of time. I mean, I'm trying to sum up weekly meetings since July in a short period of time. But are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Amelia, did you have something to add?
Well, I just, it's the thing I wanted to just mention, and I think Wayne did. Thank you, Wayne, so much for filling in and did a great job, is to explain how we have our District Safety Committee. And they're really addressing the whole gamut of healthy and safe schools. So, it reaches such a wide range, as you could see from the report, from everything from fire drills and, you know, it could be, you know, active shooter situations to, you know, those types of emergencies that we hope we never have to deal with, to the safety and mental health and the, all those, all the other issues that go along with having a safe and healthy environment for our students. So, we have a district committee, but that, from that, each of our building principals has a crisis plan within their buildings and they have a crisis team in their buildings. So, it really stems out. And it's been nice how the district team has been meeting weekly and then the building leaders are siphoning in a meeting with them and making sure that we have, we're working on a consistent district plan.
Any questions from the board? Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
And then, item 7.4, Preliminary Budget. Jay and Julie.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present some additional information. We recently became aware of some new information that will require adjustments to the current-year budget. And in order to prepare you to make decisions on next year's budget, we need to make some updates to current year. So, I'm just going to go through some information for you so that you can understand why this is occurring. The current-year budget is the foundation upon which the next year's budget is built. Recent information justifies an update to the current budget. This update will provide a solid foundation for the 16-17 budget. That foundation will improve the accuracy of the 16-17 budget and the predictability of the district's long-range financial health. While this update is being completed, we are recommending a pause in the development of the 16-17 preliminary budget. A pause is not any change to the approved input variables that the board approved in prior meeting. Work will continue on using the budget input variables. The board will be presented a revised 16-17 preliminary budget using the same input variables applied to an updated version of the current-year budget. Although revisions take place throughout the year and are brought to the board several times, we felt that it was really important that we bring this information to you now and not wait till a later time or fiscal year end. Medicaid revenue is received by the district. The district has been working to improve Medicaid school-based services forecasting. Pupil Services, Transportation, and the Business Services Department are working together and working through a process of implementing improved claims, processing, and training. The district receives revenue based on claims for specific school-based services. And in case you are not familiar with what that is that we are claiming, it is services provided to Medicaid-eligible students that have a health-related service in their IEP. Those services include nursing, occupational therapy, physical therapy, delegated nursing, attendant care, and speech and language pathology. The current-year budget requires revisions based on the new information identified. The 2015-16 budget was based on an old model for Medicaid forecasting, and that was on the process of using historical actuals. Improvements to the process predicts a lower revenue in special education services revenue. Lower special education revenue transfers the obligation to fund those costs to the general fund. This will increase the general fund cost to support special education. Updating the adjustment to the 15-16 budget is necessary to account for this now rather than waiting. This will reduce the end-of-the-year variance in this year's budget and create a more accurate foundation upon which we will build the most accurate 16-17 preliminary budget. A revised 15-16 budget will be provided to the board on March 28th, meeting for your consent. This revised budget will include adjustments, including the estimated Medicaid revenue change, the interfund transfer between general fund and the special education fund, and then any regular ongoing adjustments that were not included in the previous version. An example of that is we recently got DPI approval for the Title I grant and Title II grant and revisions to both IDEA flow-through and preschool grants. So, those federal grant resources do not always time when we approve budgets, and so, they come as revision. Please know in advance, the reduction Medicaid revenue will decrease the estimated 15-16 year-end fund balance. This slide just shows you the timeline. On the 28th, you will receive a revised budget on the Agenda Consent. We also plan on presenting that same evening on fund balance and cash flow. Using the revised 15-16 budget and the input variables, we will work through the five-year forecasting again. And on April 11th, you will receive a presentation on a five-year forecast. It'll include both versions for a scenario, including both the base wage of half percent increasing, excuse me, 0.25% increasing by half a percent for five years. And the second version will be the 1.5% for five years. That same evening, you will receive a revised preliminary budget using the same two scenarios that you previously saw. I'd like to extend opportunity for either Mr. Clark or Dr. Mueller to comment. Questions?
Mr. Clark, did you have any comments?
No additions.
All right, any questions by the board?
Can you just explain to me why there's a lower special ed service revenue? Is that due to changes in a law? Is it due to kids moving out of our district or choosing another district? Or is it...
No, it's mainly, Kate, it's mainly due to the type of service that is claimed through Medicaid.
Okay.
So, what would happen is if a student is having different services provided for them, then we have to go in and change it through their IEP. And then, the claim can be a different amount from that.
Okay, thank you.
We just, when we started looking at the whole budget, we wanted to bring you the most accurate. And as we were discovering, as we started working through things, we're like, you know what, we'd like to pause so that we can bring you the most accurate so that you can make a more informed decision at the later date. We thought that was the better choice.
Thank you for doing that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We look forward to continued information. So, Consent Agenda items. I would note that we have five items on the Consent Agenda this evening. Are there any that you would like to have pulled out and considered separately? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
And I know Dr. Mueller wanted to make a comment before we vote.
Yeah, at this meeting on our Personnel Report, we have 199 years altogether of staff who have worked in our district that are retiring. And I just wanted to make special note because, you know, just, I've only been here since July, but I've really gotten to know quite a few of these pretty well and just want to recognize their time and dedication to our district. Well, one was Lori Kessler, who I... She has 36 years in her position. And, I mean, and she's not alone. We have also from the high school, 38 years, Robin Melby, who was in our Social Studies Department, and Scott Schreiber for 30 years in marketing. You know, that's a lot of experience and all the years of service to our students. Just thank you for all of your dedication and hard work. Definitely will be missed. And then, we also have an elementary, Judy Buttsman, from Sand Lake, 36 years. Our Nancy, our secretary at the middle school, eight years. Cindy Lipke, 21 years at Viking Elementary, serving our, you know, grades four and five. And then, Sue Swackhammer has, you know, she also serves on our union with our representative and 30 years in our district. So, just thank you to all of them for all their hard work and dedication. And they will be missed. We hope they come back in other capacities to help.
And we will, as usual, have a recognition, retirement recognition at the end of this school year to recognize all those folks. But thank you, Dr. Mueller, for pointing that out. So, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Seeing no further discussion, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Next item is Board Members' Reports and Discussion. I will call on board members in the order of the roll call and ask that you present any comments or committee reports that you may have. Beginning with Lisa Collins.
I don't have any comments. And we have a committee meeting coming up at the end of the month, so nothing I'm finding.
Thank you. Tim Eniger?
Just to report, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met earlier tonight. It was a relatively short meeting for that group, starting to look at some long-range plans or plans for the middle school track as well that I think will probably become before the board relatively soon.
Mr. Dunlap?
I'd just like to thank Steve and Mrs. Romanowski for speaking tonight and let you know that you were heard by this board. I have a sophomore grandson in this school district and I have six other grandchildren in this school district. So, I'm as concerned as you are and I hear what you're saying.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, I got several things. I'd like to say, first of all, the robotics team, I thought that was really awesome. I just think the teamwork, the communication, I thought the students really got into it. The idea that it doesn't come along for free, they got to raise some money. I think that was really good. And I can't help but think if, with that new law that passed, the Alternative Teaching Certificate, it's maybe an opportunity for Holman School District to hire someone in computers or with robotics. I don't know if we have people already on staff that are really good at it. I don't know. But if we don't, that's an opportunity I think the district should take. Had a really good time with Jen Slusser from the... She's the, she does the disabilities students.
Transition.
Transition students, yeah, with disabilities. She presented at HABA on Thursday, and she is just a fireball of energy. I was just really impressed with her. And she just went on and on and on. But she's just a, I think, I have some friends who have family members who have children who are challenged. And, you know, the businesses that work with these students, and I think it's just really cool. The counselors today, their presentation was very, very impressive. I thought they, I've never met anybody in the Holman School District who isn't dedicated, who doesn't have the best interests of the students or the best energy. Yet, we still miss opportunities as a district. And Mrs. Romanowski and the family, I appreciate you coming today, too. I think despite, you can have as many policies as you want, bullying, I think we're revising that, I guess. It comes back to systems, too. If you think about education, this week has just been a boatload of change. I mean, they have the voucher schools, that study from Arkansas that lowers, I said that the, there's lower crime because of voucher schools, and that's a publicly funded type of school system. So, that is very encouraging. And I also saw on the news last night, which I thought was really interesting, O'Clare is considering starting school from 8:30 to 10:00 in the mornings. So, I think that is something we should consider, too. Systems over policies. And I can't help but wonder, and as a board member, as a leading member of our district, are there other children who also are challenged, who make ultimately really poor choices? And if we aren't meeting all their opportunities, thinking outside the box with start times and all those kinds of things, we're not doing our job. Thanks.
Okay, Jeff?
I guess I don't have much, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anita Jagazinski?
The Personnel and Governance Committee met last week. And I will let Cheryl touch on what we spoke about there because she's the chairperson. I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Kessler and the other retirees, especially Mrs. Kessler. I have a daughter who's starting out as a school counselor this year. And so, to see Lori leaving and see my daughter starting out and all she has to look forward to and hopefully a long career ahead of her. And she always looked up to Mrs. Kessler, so it's kind of bittersweet to see her go. And then, last, I wanted to thank you all for speaking tonight. Because we don't respond directly to you, please don't take that, that we don't care. Sometimes, we don't, as individual board members, respond directly. We, Cheryl speaks on our behalf. We read everything that we get and we do hear you. When I was a sophomore in high school, I lost my best male friend to suicide. So, when I heard about your son, it was, I can only imagine. So, please don't take that, don't think that we don't care and that we're not always, always looking out for the best that we can do for every kid in our district. Sometimes, we succeed and sometimes, we could really improve. But we are always trying. And that's always, that's always at the forefront of what we do. So, I thank you very much for speaking tonight because I know it couldn't have been easy. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Anita. Kate?
I don't want to go too much longer, but yes, to Lori Kessler. She has been one of the greatest gifts this district has had. She has, she's just one of the greatest gifts and suffice it to say that. I agree with Anita and all of the people that commented to you, Connie and Steve. And I want to thank you for coming forward. Probably some school boards are happy because there is no public comment and the meeting goes faster. But public comments help us think about how we can improve. And I don't care how good we are in every category. We can, there's always an exception. There's always something we can do better. And public comments perk us up to what, oh, what else could we have done? And this won't be the last time, will it? There'll be something else that we could have done something better with. But I think that public comment and to the 10 or 12 people that watch this program when they tune in, public comments are really important to us, really important to us. And it takes a bit of bravery to do that, to come forward because you never know how you're going to be received. With this group of people, you will always be received and embraced with a gratefulness. So, I thank you for not just coming here tonight, but I know you're also working with Chris and in the school district. And you're going to help make change happen. And that's, that's a bit of Kevin's legacy, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Kate. As Anita said, we did have the Personnel and Governance Committee. We talked about a number of items that, some of them will be coming to the board, I think, at the next meeting. We are discussing state tournament and clinic attendance by staff, filling board vacancies, selection of our attorney, and volunteers. And a lot of work is being done in those areas as we continue to update our policies. And in some cases, there may be changes made to those policies. And in some cases, there may not be any changes made. But we do have a commitment to look at our policies every, I think, three years is what we do. And we continue on that schedule. Mrs. Romanowski, I have no excuse. I did say in an email I was going to reach out to you. I have the card. I was going to give it to Chris this evening to address it to you because I don't have your, didn't have your mailing address. I do apologize. It's not an excuse. I should have taken care of it sooner. But I think, as the other board members have said, Kevin's loss has touched us all. And we do ask questions, have asked questions. Some of those questions have been answered, some of them have not. We look at our staff. I think our staff, while there is always work to be done... we have high expectations of our staff. And I've encouraged people that if they have specific, and I've encouraged in many emails actually, to, if there are specific examples, please share them with me and I will look into them. And haven't received those examples. And so, if there are examples that haven't been shared with Dr. Mueller, because that's what I do, then I will share them with her, they can be looked into. But I know that it is just a difficult time for us all and it can, it's unimaginable what you and your family is going through. But it, we do look at these students as our students as well. It is a burden that we bear to make sure that all of our students are safe and feel that safety every day that they come here. Dr. Mueller, I think, made that comment in one of her communications with the staff that we, or the parents, that we do have work to do, we understand that and share that with society today, that there is much work to be done. So as others have said, Anita, very eloquently, thank you for coming forward though and sharing your thoughts and feelings and know that you were heard. So with that, I would mention that we have a board meeting scheduled March 28th. There was some discussion about that, that is the Monday after Easter. There are people on spring break, but I think our staff has decided that they would like to continue to hold that meeting on that day. April 11th, that is a date we may be doing a questionnaire. Christina may be reaching out because we have a couple board members, three board members, I think, that are attending a conference and won't be returning until late on April 11th. And there's a lot of important work to be done on that agenda that evening. So we may be asking if April 12th would be amenable to the board to meet because we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. School board?
Question?
Yes.
It's post-election. Is that the reorganization meeting?
I don't think so. I think the organization is that last meeting.
It's the second one.
Okay, I know that there's a certain number of days it has to take place after the election. I just didn't know if that second one, because sometimes we've had it the first one because that second one has been too late.
Exactly. So thanks, Tim, though. I think we did look at that. I know that there is the survey on the school board evaluation survey that Christina did send to you. So please make your, every effort to get that completed. And, and school board evaluation of district administrator continuing on that format of a survey. And, and a survey link, tomorrow morning will be sent. So tomorrow morning, and we only have 10 days. So it's imperative that you take one night this week to complete that survey. So because it will close out without you. And then the plan is to have an opportunity to review the results as a board, as we have in the past. And then we will share those with Dr. Mueller from there. So just wanted to make that note. Seeing no other items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay, motion carries, we are adjourned. At 8:14, not so.